First I'll open and close the four thirty executive session. For the record. Alright.
I'll fill you in later.
And then, it being five o'clock and a quorum being present, I will open the Board of Selectmen meeting for January sixth, five eight, five P M, five A M. First item will be Board of Health issue, discussion and or action on the following topics, issues, trash and recycling options beyond June thirtieth of two thousand and twenty. And Derek is here to speak to us.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
Uh, it's just a little cheat sheet for you on what our options are. The current contract that we have expires June thirtieth of this year. So this is just what our options are, which really kind of only have two. We do have the option available to renew with Republic for one more year. That cost is written down on the paper. The only other option that we have is either going out for bid or trash, I believe trash and recycling is exempt from.
It is.
From going out for bid, so we could always pick a company and start negotiating with them. From research I've done and people I've talked to, if, if we go out for bid or if we decide to negotiate, I'm assuming will be somewhere over four hundred thousand annually, where the Republic option is at three sixty seven. For one year, I think it's a better option to renew with Republic, but that's, I mean it's whatever you guys would like to do is what we'll do.
Well, I think we should find out what somebody else would offer us.
An exact number I don't know, I know that you're gonna be looking at four hundred to start.
No, I would like to see something from another company.
Okay.
Okay, with that in mind, I'm kinda on that train also. But my question would be, if we went out to bid and then it came back higher than what Republic has offered for the fifth year extension, can we go back to the fifth year extension?
There's usually a provision in, in the proposal that says that the town has the right to refuse or reject any bid for whatever reason, so.
Alright, so. Please, sir.
Um, no, um, I wanna go out for bid as well.
Okay, because I, yeah, I, I think in the past we had had a time when we had a rollover, rollover, and then we, we found that, you know, that it was detrimental. So, um, I would make a motion that we put it out to bid for a three-year contract with the stipulation that, you know, if, uh, so maybe so we all know that if it comes back higher than Republic might offer, we might go for one year, but we'll, that make that decision later on. So I'll make that motion.
Second.
Okay. Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright.
Thank you.
Okay, take care. Item number two is the weekly warrants numbered zero twenty-eight through zero thirty-one, pardon me, for the month of January two thousand and twenty. And just once again, so we know, this is basically a formality that we had been not following, so just so busy.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion made, do I have a second?
Uh, I'm sorry.
Tell George it clicks this way.
Oh.
There you go.
That's different.
It's tricky.
What was the, uh?
Motion was made and seconded to.
Just to sign the weekly warrants.
Just to approve the warrants.
Motion made.
Yeah, alright.
Did you make the motion?
Yes.
I did.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor? Aye. The next item is the petition from the Free Town Lakeville Lake District to have a special town meeting to put forward the idea of a Free Town Lake, Free Town Lakeville Lake District. And do we have a spokesman here?
Yes.
The name, sir, just.
James Sasha.
Just. Alright, okay. So, Mr. Sasha has given the town clerk a petition with a, with a number of signatures, a hundred, at least a hundred of which were certified, requesting a special town meeting be held on this subject. And under the bylaw, we have forty-five days to carry out that request. So I guess I'll give you a few minutes if you have something you want to say to us.
I'm here just basically informational purposes only. We're new at this, I believe the town is new at this, I don't think it's ever been done before, so I'm here to more or less answer questions that you may have. I think I'm probably the resident expert on, on the process at this point, so I just didn't want the town to feel blindsided at all and, um.
Could, could you detail for us?
Sure.
The objective of this?
The objective for the Free Town Lakeville Lake District is to create an income to eradicate invasive weed species and improve the water quality on Long Pond.
And this cost will only be borne by abutters to the lake?
Yes, so the district would be comprised of proprietors, which are people that own waterfrontage and people that own property that are within neighborhoods that have deeded rights or access to, to the lake.
And what happens to all other residents of Lakeville and Free Town?
Nothing.
Do we still maintain the same access we have today?
Yes.
And if somebody can't pay?
It's, it's a tax, so they have to pay or, or the town has to, um.
Restriction of deed?
Yeah, no, well, the, um, if someone doesn't pay their taxes, then the town puts them a tax title, so that's what happens. It's actually, it's, it's a bet, it's, it's on, the tax would be on the tax bill, so it's, it'll, a separate line item on the tax bill.
Why?
Waterfront owners, waterfront owners have to pay the tax, they don't have any ability to, to, but if someone has a financial hardship, then there is an ability for them to opt out of the district by signing a deed restriction.
Now, how much money are you hoping to raise in annual revenue for this?
We're looking at, right now, our, our budget is approximately two hundred and thirty thousand dollars a year.
A year? And you're going to tax this on just to get butters? How much is that per house?
Yeah, approximately point zero 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 four percent of.
Dollars.
The assessed value.
In dollar amounts.
On average, a hundred and sixty dollars a year per household.
And how many houses did you say?
The district would be approximately fifteen hundred houses. Free Town's a lot less, um, there's, there's approximately.
Is that including Free Town?
Approximately eleven hundred in Lakeville and four hundred in Free Town.
Okay.
Two-thirds of Long Pond is in Lakeville.
And how much was the total amount again?
Um, I'm sorry, so the, and this is an estimate, two hundred and fifty-one thousand five hundred dollars for, for the budget.
Two hundred and fifty-one per year.
Um, it should be noted that, uh, once the district is formed, the district would qualify for federal funding, and there's approximately sixty million dollars in federal funding available, um, they just wouldn't give it to me, so, uh, we, we would be able to, we would qualify for grants from, for federal funding, so there's a very good possibility that there would be zero tax dollars needed. I would imagine that for the first year though.
No, you're, you're some, you're a group of some kind or form to do this?
We have, yes, we do have a, we have a committee, we've been meeting for three years now.
Okay. Have you?
Once, once the district is formed, um, once the district is approved in Free Town, we're doing the same thing in Lakeville, and then the, the town's attorney has to file with, um, the state legislature, a special act of legislation, the senate has to approve it, and then the governor has to give it a final approval. I've been in contact with Senator Roderick's, we've had many conversations, he is in total support of it, and I have a letter of recommendation from him as well.
When was the last time you spoke with him?
I spoke with him at a restaurant about a month and a half ago.
I was just on the phone with him, um, before I got here. Do you know that he set aside a hundred thousand dollars through syrup head to do a study to ensure that the, what you're talking about, the invasive weeds, is the cause of the corrosion or, um, you know, the problems on the pond? Did you know that?
Nope, he didn't make me aware of that.
Okay, well, he did, and he also is bringing together, 'cause it's not just.
A hundred thousand dollars isn't gonna touch.
It's, we're not, we're not, we're not, he's, to do the study.
Yeah.
Okay, and, um.
Go ahead.
He, uh, he also has spoken about not, you know, it's not just Long Pond.
Mm-hmm.
The pond is all the way down, so.
What's that mean?
I mean, he's gonna get Taunton involved, and he's gonna get Middleborough involved, and he's gonna get, you know, so, is it the tributaries that need to be, um, you know, cleaned out, is it, you know, what is it? Is it the boats picking up the weeds and making them expand? Is that what the problem is? And nobody really knows, and that's exactly what he said to me on the phone today, is no one's ever really done a study to say, this is exactly what the problem is.
This is a study that was done by the Department of Conservation and Recreation, State of Massachusetts, February twenty-second, two thousand and six, cost six million.
Six, two thousand and six.
Yeah.
That was quite a long time ago.
Alright, but, um.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Okay, hold, let.
This costs six million dollars to do this study?
Okay, sir, just a minute, okay. Let's, the, the issue though, that's before the board.
Mm-hmm.
Is that they have brought a petition asking for a special town meeting, and they want to put this article on the, uh, the special town meeting. So, just so that we're, we're not getting overly into a conversation over the merits of the article. Uh, I just wanna keep it.
Yeah, I, I know Charlie, but I feel like.
Well, okay, but I, I think we've gotta keep it to, the, the issue to have the discussion is at the town meeting, so I'm just gonna try to keep us on track here, and we need to set a date for a special town meeting.
Well, that's, that's, I, I appreciate what you're saying, what I, the reason why I'm here is so that we can air out possible, um, issues or, or, you know, find out what does the town feel about this. Regardless, you know, we have presented the petition, the, the town meeting has to happen, um, and it'll go to a vote from, from the townspeople, it's not really up to the
That's my point, that's my point, is a discussion of the merits of the, the issue
town.
that you have.
Is almost irrelevant, yes.
Is, yeah, it's, we really need to, you know, to, so we get out of here at a recent, reasonable time, uh, set a date for, uh, the, uh, special town meeting. The latest that we can have it would actually be February fifteenth, which is a Saturday. I believe that it might, Tim would be reasonable to say that the week of February ninth might be the best for the town meeting.
Yeah, I have all the, the conflicts that I'm aware of.
Yeah.
Listed there, so.
I have questions on this?
But like I said, okay, excuse me, like I said, the, that discussion is best, uh.
All that night?
On that night, yes.
Okay.
Okay, alright. So, I'll, okay, is there, uh, anything, anyone have any problem with the week of February ninth?
Saturday, no, that's.
Uh, no.
You said Saturday.
Well, well, February fifteenth is a Saturday, that's the latest that, under the bylaw, we could have the town meeting.
Can we have it that day?
You could have it on the fifteenth, yes.
Okay.
You, is, that.
Make a motion to have it on Saturday the fifteenth.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, um, motion made and seconded to have a special town meeting, uh, on February fifteenth. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright.
What time and at what location?
Um, so I guess that would be a, do we want it in the morning or do we want it in the afternoon?
One o'clock?
One o'clock, good.
At F E S, Jim?
It's one o'clock, good for you.
That's fine by me, um, I would, uh, I think the location may be important because I would imagine there would be a hundred or more people present.
Free Town Elementary School, do we, well, we have to, we have to name the location tonight, correct? So Free Town.
Yeah, so I would say, actually suggest multiple, like some alternate dates, just in case the, they're not this.
Okay, um, so how about, uh, we do a motion with the first date and time and place, and then we'll go with alternate, uh, times or dates.
Well, we don't really have to set the date tonight, do we?
Yes.
We do?
Yeah.
Okay, you have to get the.
To get the warrant done, motion, and, uh, we have to open the, we'll open the warrant tonight, um, and then, uh, probably close it on the twenty-first.
Well, you can make, we can push everything off, we'll just, we'll just take a quick look at that calendar. So I might give in the right dates here. So next names on the twenty-first, if we're looking at the fifteenth, we can actually push everything off and make the decisions on the twenty-first, I can call around to F E S and make sure that the, everything's.
Cause it just has to be posted fourteen days.
Yes.
Yeah, well, it has to be held within forty-five days, so we can, if calling and posting everything on the twenty-first, that gives us enough time.
Okay, alright, so.
That's the direction the board would like to give me, I can pitch out to F E S.
So if we set the date for February fifteenth.
To call F E S.
That'd be date number one.
Okay.
And then, uh, if, and, well, do the formalities on the twenty-first.
Okay.
And, um, then do you want to have a second, would you like a second alternative date?
That would be, that would probably be the best option.
Uh, so, my question to you two would be, um, an alternative date if the fifteenth doesn't work, such as there's some activity at the, uh, elementary school at one o'clock.
Why don't we, uh, leave the date and make the site variable, cause we could, maybe could use the high school. I think I'm sure one of these two would have to be available.
Uh-huh, um.
How many people fit in the elementary school?
About, um.
Three fifty.
Yeah, about two fifty.
Two fifty?
Three fifty, three fifty, okay, maybe three fifty, yeah, okay.
And the high school?
Uh, about the same.
The auditorium, yeah, I think it's a little bit.
Are you talking about the elementary school gym or auditorium?
The auditorium, yeah. Um, alright. But, do we, wanna hold off on setting a date? I'm just thinking because it, we, we should set the date tonight, right?
We, we can, it's completely up to you guys.
Alright, I'll make a motion to, um, have February fifteenth as the first date and February eighth as the alternate date.
Okay.
Both at one o'clock, both at F E S, and both in the, um, auditorium.
Second round.
The motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright.
Alright, and we'll, uh, take care of the warrant business on the twenty-first. Alright, uh, you have the dates potential, um, well, if you would want to inquire, uh, probably a little bit later in the week, Tim?
Yeah.
For the.
Yep, I have his contact information, so.
Okay, he'll give you a call, okay? To firm it up, it's the, the, the actual date that's gonna be after, like I said, the fifteenth is the, uh, first date, if there's a problem, then we'll go to the eighth, he'll tell you that it's.
Okay.
Can I ask you another question, Charlie, can I ask him?
Yes.
Yeah, I also, go ahead.
Why did this not go to a town first, so that it would be in the tax base for both towns rather than saddling the abutters only?
It would be, it would be turned down, the voters would vote against it.
Okay.
And, yeah, that's the long and short of it, I'm, I'm not reinventing the wheel, I'm copying what other people have done in other lake districts, there's several of them in Massachusetts.
Just a question, alright.
So the, the one, one other thing I just want to, uh, we, we do have an attorney, she was supposed to be here at an emergency and she couldn't make it, um, but I think it would be important for our attorney to have a conversation with the, with the town council, just so that the, the process is known, excuse me, um, because I'm, I'm ninety-nine percent sure this will be voted and approved, so I think it's, uh, important for the town to understand, you know, what the town will have to, uh, you know, will have to do to, to, uh, complete the district.
Okay, um, when you say what the town will have to do to complete the district, what do you mean by that? Just so, because I, I, I understand.
The process itself, it's probably, you know, I don't, I don't think it's up to the, to the board here that, you know, I don't think it's going to encumber you at all, oh, no, it, it actually does, um, because once the, um, once the senate approves it and the governor approves it, then, um, it comes back to the town and the town's selectmen have to call a meeting of the proprietors, and then the proprietors vote to, um, elect a prudential committee, and, um, once the prudential committee is elected, then the selectmen step aside and the prudential committee takes over from, from the meeting.
Okay.
But there's, you know, there's legislation involved, there's, um, it's going to encumber the, the, the tax collector's office, um, there's, there's a little bit of homework to be done, um, and that's, that's again why I'm here tonight, I just don't, didn't want the town to be blindsided, I've already talked to the tax collector's office and the officers and.
I believe in the law you end up.
You have to reverse it.
Yeah, you have to reimburse it, but that just, yeah.
Okay, one last thing, could you send me a copy of that study in two thousand and six?
Sure.
Thank you.
I have just one, uh, thing to, of our interest, um, when you were here earlier, there was some talk of, uh, taking over the boat ramp.
Yes.
Now, that's not part of your legislative, um, proposal, is it?
It, it, it is actually, yes, we, we would be interested in, um, taking over the management of the boat ramp, and I think that's also in the town's best interest, um, if you speak to the Board of Health, they really, um, they get inundated with phone calls and complaints, and so what happened was the state built the boat ramp and they deeded the management to, to the, uh, town of Free Town. I've been in contact with the, um, State Department of Access, and that's who deeded the management to the town of Free Town, um, there's, again, lawyers will have to figure that out, how that gets deeded to the, um, to the district itself.
Is that part of the article that you're submitting?
Um, no.
Okay, so this vote will not affect that?
My only question would be, if the article is the petition, what is the mechanism by, how do, they approve what you had petitioned the residents to do, but that doesn't specify the organizational structure, doesn't specify things like the boat ramp, it doesn't specify how the process is going to work, so that, you know, from, if I was a resident, I'd be concerned about that because there's a lot of unknowns out there that I, I don't know about, and the, you know, the, the idea of us losing the boat ramp, uh, you know, I, I don't know if that is something the town's willing to give up.
I, I, I don't think that.
You wouldn't lose the boat ramp, it's still a state boat ramp, it would just be managed by the district, it wouldn't be a loss.
Right, but here's, here's my, my question, I'm not clear on, like I said, I'm, I'm pretty familiar with district, the district makeup, okay? Uh, different districts, but how does, how is it not an item that the district and the town of Free Town should have a discussion on if and when you are established as a district? You get my point? I don't think that it would be a good idea to have part of any legislative enabling of a, of a district, a lake district, to have the authority over the boat ramp, okay? I think it would be best for.
May I ask why?
Yeah, I'll, I'll tell you, uh, because the district could at some time decide that they're gonna shut the boat ramp because they want to have some special event that's gonna raise revenue for the lake district, and then the, the private citizens who may come from anywhere lose their access to the pond.
Alright.
And that would be my big objection to that, that I, not that, you know, twenty years from now, because this goes on, on, this district could go on forever. Okay, uh, becomes, it becomes a, its own.
State entity.
Well, its own entity, its own governmental entity, and, you know, you and I and everybody else is gone twenty, twenty-five years from now, but now we have this happening, and so, and the other thing is, you know, it could be, you know, somebody could start to close the boat ramp because they want to have a private lake for their lake district, and that would.
So they, then the state.
So you'd be reducing the.
Ramp is owned by the state, it's only managed by Free Town.
Right, I realize that.
So there's rules and regulations in place, and those rules and regulations.
But you would be taking, but you would be taking over that, that, uh, oh, authority. But, so.
So, not me.
No, 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 but I, I say that, why, not, not you, yes, yes, right.
If, if the management was, yeah, then there should be, um, words put in place that would prohibit anything like that.
So, I guess my, my.
It's your article, it's your article, you wrote the article, we can't change it.
I only, I only wrote an article to create a lake district, not, not to take over a boat ramp.
Right, so, that's, that's my point.
It's a, it is a hot point, and, but our, no one's intention is to take over and shut down a boat ramp.
Okay, but that's, you're, you're my intention, like I said, twenty years from now, we're not here to, uh, to deal with it, but, so, that's just a point I wanted to, to bring up.
I, I think it's important for everyone to understand that we're here specifically for the betterment of the water, right? So the water is in, is in trouble, and it's been in trouble for twenty years, and so I've been trying to help, I've been on every committee there's been, I've, I've spent more than my fair, I mean, I've lost probably half my, my income over the last two years in the amount of time I've spent working on this project. It's not because I wanna shut down a boat ramp, it's because.
That's, and my, but my point is, is that, once again, you and I have gone from this , it's a scene here twenty years from now, and then we have this issue crop up, and that's, that's my concern as I look at the issue.
Yeah.
That, what you wanna do, that's, that's my, my biggest concern is.
Charlie, we can't resolve this tonight.
No, 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 but, no, but I'm, I'm just, I'm just, I, I'm just, you know, bringing that up.
No, but it's good, that, that, these are the, these are the conversations that our attorney should have with town council and, and figure out a, a way to get that.
Did your attorney prepare this petition?
Yes.
So the language is in a form that is acceptable to the state legislature, should it pass, I guess?
I certainly hope so.
Okay. Just making.
Yeah, see, that's, uh.
Excuse me, do you have a charter? Do you have a charter?
I don't, I, no, no, I don't, I would say no.
No, the, does a lake different, your lake complex, do you have a charter? Do you have certain rules and regulations that we can look at?
No, we don't.
No? No, okay, thank you.
Alright, uh, thank you, Tim, we'll get back to you, uh, to. Tim will get back to you, uh, to be affirmative on the date. And if you have any questions or if your attorney has any questions, he wants to contact the town council.
They should probably go for me.
Right, yeah, just, just give the office, yeah, just give the office a call and go, go from there.
Okay.
All right?
All right, thank you.
Uh, the next is.
Charlie, at some point are we gonna discuss this and are we gonna vote on whether we're in favor or not in favor? And are we gonna talk to the select board in Lakeville as well? Because we're all in this together and I have no idea where they sit.
I would, I just said that to Charlie, what happens if we vote for it and they don't vote for it? So now that they have a Lake District, it's only comprised of one community.
You have to have both.
Uh, yep.
Okay.
Tim? Try and set up a meeting with them.
Okay.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is, uh, change order for the police station. Lisa, do you happen to have that figure, the seven thousand dollar figure?
It is. Um, so the change order for the police station, um, is in the amount of seven thousand, two sixteen thirty-seven. This is to put, um, provisions for power, um, signage, um, and the conduit. It's requested by the town, it's for a charging station, should we ever need one down the road. Um, we wouldn't have to, um, rip up the parking lot or anything like that. And it can be used for a variety of vehicles and variety of reasons.
It's an electrical charging station?
For, in case we have electrical cars or anything else that we might need in the, in the future. So, the change order is the amount of seven thousand, two sixteen thirty-seven.
Yeah, okay.
Where is this going to be?
In the police station down near the carport. Cause you don't know what's gonna happen, and, so.
The, the purpose of that would be to, just for the conduit, not for the charging station.
Right.
That in the future, if they decided to, uh, put a charging station in, then, um, we wouldn't have to dig up the asphalt and repave the.
That seven thousand bucks just to run a pipe?
Says for the provisions for power, signage, the, the base of the charging station and, and it was requested by the town.
Everything but charging station itself. So the wire will be through, any extra, anything like that.
Motion took so.
Okay, motion made.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, um, to approve that change order. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, the next item is to, um, renew the bond, uh, on the new police station. Uh, basically, updating and renewing the band. It's, the total sum that we would, uh, be putting out on the band would be, uh, five million, seven hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Uh, motion made and seconded to approve, uh, the band on the new police station.
And we're just paying interest on it during the period and the premium is gonna be applied to the balance of the principal. And the award is to be NY Mellon.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, the next item is, uh, the increase in life insurance coverage for town employees. Uh, presently, the town employees, um, have a four thousand dollar, um, insurance policy that is paid by the town. Um, and this would increase it from, uh, that four thousand to five thousand. The last time that, um, it was increased was probably in the eighties. And so I have a email here from, uh, Jessica Thomas, the town treasurer. Uh, attaches a current plan we offer for new hires. This plan has forty-one total employees. We have currently, we currently have ninety-seven eligible employees, of which twenty-six do not have the coverage. They may, they may not have wanted it or they were not offered it at the time they were hired. This, um, oh, change, actually increasing the, uh, insurance would give them the opportunity to enroll. If these employees do enroll, this would cost the town an additional six hundred and forty-five dollars and eighty-four cents a year. Uh, with the current enrollment only, the additional cost to the town would be one hundred and seventy-two dollars and twenty cents a year. That's next year. Our potential total cost, uh, is eight hundred and eighteen dollars and four cents for, for a full year. Remembering we have already six months into the fiscal year and if we wanted to, this to happen in this year, and we would still be at least a couple of months out, as I would, um, need to check with Chris, who is the, um, oh, um, sales agent for, uh, Boston Mutual. The, the additional sheets attached are from what Chris, uh, had at the meeting. So, if we increase the, um, oh, insurance by a thousand dollars, every employee who, uh, is, uh, active at this time would be able to get the five, uh, the five thousand policy. And that would add up to, uh, an additional six hundred and forty-five dollars and eighty-four cents a year.
In total.
In total, and that would be, right now, that would be basically next year. Um, and if the, only the current enrollment was to do it, it would be a hundred and seventy-two dollars. So, um.
So the difference is like four hundred and change?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
That, that, that's, that's going on the high.
Uh, I'll second that for discussion. Um, the, are you, cause in this thing here, it, um, in the explanation, it said, um, one eighty-nine seventy-four or two oh four oh six monthly.
Yeah, I actually, to, to tell you the truth, I had actually called him about that and that wasn't correct. So, the, the, and I actually talked to him based upon, I have different numbers than Charlie, I actually talked to the sales representative today. And there's two potential options. One is if we allow the voluntary plan, which is, uh, a plan they are, Boston Mutual is proposing, uh, that offers a hundred thousand in life insurance without a medical exam. Uh, it'll be a group print plan and it's offered at a significant discount. If we allow them to, to o- offer that, then they have two different rates. One rate is at fifty-four cents, which is without offering that plan, with op, without offering, offering that plan. With offer, offering the voluntary plan, it goes down to thirty-five cents. He had, he said there are currently sixty-seven employees currently, uh, in the, um, having, that have life insurance. Uh, with the fifty-four cents, the annual would be four hundred and thirty-four dollars and sixteen cents if it was without the voluntary at the fifty-four cent rate. At the thirty-five cent rate, if we off, allowed them to offer the voluntary, they reduce the rate from fifty-four to thirty-five. The annual cost would be two, two hundred and eighty-one dollars and forty cents. And then I'd have two different numbers for six months. Without the voluntary, it's two seventeen oh eight, with the voluntary, it's one forty seventy. So it's, it's basically, uh, the, uh, the other, um, we're obviously not gonna offer the, uh, uh, the four or five thousand dollars to the retirees. So the, 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 the main group is the sixty-seven employees.
And are we starting with this fiscal year or next fiscal year?
That's a decision the board can make. They, they said that, uh, right now, they're, they're probably two or three months out. Uh, so we wouldn't be doing it, it'd even be less than the two seventeen of the one forty for the, if you're only gonna do it May, you know, April, May and June. Uh, otherwise, we, it would start July first. It, but the decision has to be made whether, I don't see any downside to letting them offer, to just talk to our employees. It's a hundred percent paid for by the employee, they're offering a hundred thousand dollar life insurance, probably goes up to a hundred. At various increments based upon their age, but there's no medical exam because it's a group policy. And it's, it re- relatively cheap rates. So if we allow them to do that, they give us a cheaper rate on the four to, the, the one thousand dollar bump up.
Make a motion that we go that route and accept that.
Uh, just so I understand, when you say.
Let's just look at the four to five at this point.
At the optional for the employee.
Right, okay.
So let, you're gonna withdraw your first motion?
Withdraw my first motion.
All right.
Okay.
Okay. Oh, no worries. Uh, just so it's not confusing. I'll second that. And David, can you forward that information via email, please?
I can.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, next item is, um, the agreement between environmental partners and the water and sewer commission to do a rate and, uh, water and sewer rate study, uh, for the town. And from the letter that I got from the, uh, commission, the money, it would be, the, believe it's gonna be, yes, it's, uh, five thousand, seven hundred and one dollars and eighty cents. Uh, oh, pardon me, uh, it's, that's the amount that was in the, uh, grant. Um, the actual, um, fee for the services would be, uh, not to exceed fifty-six hundred dollars.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Um, renew the license and service agreement between Civic Plus, formerly Virtual, Virtual Towns and Schools, uh, for the website services. Uh, basically, this is just the.
Hosting of the site, the, it's a, what they call a content management system. And basically, uh, they provide the template. And we, uh, through Tim as our webmaster, uh, uh, create all the departments and post information up on to the web using the content management system. They host it, we have the, uh, I don't know what you call it though, it's not Y at all, it's, um.
Uh, Free Town Flash, but that's a, that's a different agreement, it's a different, part of the company, basically.
Yeah. But that's all part, that's, it's, it's, it is and it isn't, I guess, but. So the, this basically is a small increase, five percent over the previous year. Uh, we are doing, using some of the features we haven't been using in the past, such as putting bids up on, uh, the website that, uh, you know, it allows an, an interactive approach for the bidders to, uh, put, pose questions uh, relative to any proposals that have been listed up there. Uh, we have, we created an economic development, uh, uh, page and we've been doing some things along those lines. And, once again, for the purpose of getting the word out to the residents about things that are happening in town, everything. When there's a snowstorm or the snow emergency or we have to open cooling centers or the transfer station is gonna be closed for the weekend, we can put that information right up on the website.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion made, motion made and seconded, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, next item is the renewal of four class two dealer's licenses uh, for, uh, twenty twenty. Uh, these came in, uh, late after we had, uh, well, pardon me, three of them came in late. Uh, the JM Auto Sales, uh, Tim lost on his desk, right?
Pretty much.
All right, and, uh, so these three came in late. So, uh, uh, and after we do that, I'd like to make a comment and see how the board feels about making an adjustment here. But, first of all, uh, do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve, um, Beach Bluff Auto Sales, John's Auto Body and Ray's Garage. Are we waiting on the JM?
Uh, no, JM actually, um, had come in on time.
Okay.
Uh, so, their paperwork, but these other three had come in late after the, uh, closing.
Okay, and JM Auto Sales?
These are just renewals of existing?
Exactly.
And, um, the, uh, both the, uh, Board of Health and the Building Commissioner looked over everything and everything seems to be in order, so.
You made a motion?
Yeah.
Second.
Uh, motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um, I would like to, um, see what the board feels about. We have a deadline of November twenty-eighth. And we send out a notice in October. What, what was the date this year?
I wanna say it was the sixteenth.
Okay. Um, and, so, if we have a mo, if everybody was to abide by the rules, so to speak, they could do all of this all at once and be done with the project. Um, when these people come in late, they have to gear down, re-gear to, um, oh, do the paperwork and so forth. So, I would like to see us, uh, open up on October first or send out the notice for October first with the deadline being still November twenty-eighth. And if you don't, uh, have your paperwork in by November twenty-eighth, that a additional, um, penalty be placed on, um, your application. Because that way, people will get their paperwork in on time. I, I don't want to, you know, I don't wanna have the fee, you know, be imposed on anyway. But I wanna, want them to have the paperwork in on time. We asked them to do that, they, they have, you know, plenty of time to do it, they know they have to do it. It's just that people lag for whatever reason and procrastinate and this would be a boost to not procrastinate.
You know, what I would suggest is, this is an issue like it seems to be. I would just tell them, if they don't come in on time, that they have to reapply from scratch. You know, I mean.
Yeah, I, I had thought of that, I kinda think that's a little bit, like, too harsh though, because, well, because you're gonna have to have a hearing.
It's gonna be more burdensome for us.
Yeah, actually, yeah, actually, because you, you're gonna have to have a hearing.
The only problem I have with this, we have rules. If we don't, if we don't follow the rules, then maybe, you know.
That, that's why I said.
I can live with either way, but.
Okay, I, I, I understand, in, in some ways I agree with you. I, I, you know, it would be, that would be real motivation, but, uh, you know, then it does end up that we have to have a whole new hearing and all that type of thing.
How about at least a, uh, a fee for, a late fee?
Right, that's, that'd be, that's the, I, my idea. Uh, what is the, um, the cost of license?
Uh, one hundred dollars.
A hundred dollars. I would, um, put out, let's say, a fifteen dollar, twenty-five dollar, whatever.
Fifty.
You know, but, hey, you know, well, I. Yeah.
You know what, put it on for the next agenda.
Yeah, we can actually find out if the public community is doing how they do it.
Okay.
We might even wanna take a look at that relative, other communities in terms of what they're charging for class two.
Yeah.
Cause that may, that sounds, it's a little on the wrong side.
All right. Number ten is, uh, uh, response to an open, uh, alleged open meeting law violation uh, presented to the Attorney General's Office by Patrick Higgins uh, involving December thirteenth, uh, selectmen's meeting where, uh, he is alleging that we did not, uh, give a good enough description of the, uh, pending litigation or potential pending litigation. Um, there is a response, uh, this is the second time he's had the same issue and our response brings out, uh, the Attorney General's, uh, old letter saying that it wasn't a violation the first time. Um, so, I'll accept the motion to, um, approve the draft of the, uh, town council's, uh, response to his request for the violation of, uh, alleged rap violation.
What is his response, I don't think I have it.
Um.
Uh, a couple more pages.
Couple more pages.
He's alleging that.
The highlighted part is, part, the critical piece of it.
On the description of potential litigation, we didn't say who we're litigating against.
He didn't say that because you, you don't wanna.
Right.
It's, you haven't decided whether or not you're actually gonna pursue legal action against the entity that you're meeting to discuss about.
He complained about this before, but we sent a letter through Brian Riley. Um, and the Attorney General upheld the decision from, um, or an agreement with Brian Riley.
So, we have a letter from our attorney?
Right, yeah, that's it.
Yeah, so, and it's been sent or...
That's the decision line.
Yeah, that's the decision, that. What's that? Yes, so we're, we're voting to send it.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to send it.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Um, I would, on this, I, there is, there's been a provision added to the law to, um, oh, discipline, I guess you could say, people who, uh, are nuisance, um, complainers.
You're being mild.
Uh, yes, I am, uh, trying to be good today. Uh, and so, I would, um, ask that we, you know, have our attorney also send a letter, hey, you know, this individual is, is a nuisance, we know it, this is a second complaint, uh, they shouldn't be taking, uh, some of these, uh, oh, complaints in the first place. So, I, I think we...
Well, I mean, if somebody wants to complain, I think we should go to complain.
But I, I think, well, it costs us approximately seven hundred dollars every time we have to handle one of these. Uh, and, you know, if it, if it had some volition, even if it was a gray area or something like that, I wouldn't have a, a problem, but he's, um, this individual has been notified before, uh, I'm well aware of him.
Let me ask you this, seven hundred dollars for our attorney to reply. Why can't we just ask the AG's, uh, opinion and give, and send him that?
Well, because we have to, we, we have to respond. It's part, part of the law.
Yeah.
The, uh, so we have to, we have to respond and, um...
But, you know, when I've called the AG's office regarding these types of issues, they've been very good. They've answered right away.
I, I understand that, Judge, but the thing is, is part of the process is that we have to give a response to the AGs when they forward these complaints to us.
And has to be based on, on law.
It has to be based on law. We can't just say, hey, we didn't do it. I, it's, it's one of those things that, uh, I think is a flaw in the law, but, uh, so I ju- I just think we should, uh, also fire off a letter, basically, to the Attorney General's office and say, hey, you know, we'll get, uh, I mean, I, I know that this individual does it throughout Bristol and Plymouth County.
That's his right. I mean, I, I don't like it, but it's his right.
But maybe...
We're not the only community that has...
But I think we should add our voices probably too, uh, but... Uh, if we're good, okay.
So, what, is there a motion requested here or?
Yes, why aren't we doing a motion?
Oh, no. Put it on for the next meeting. Because you wanna know why? We'll have another open meaning law violation, 'cause it's not on the agenda.
Yeah, exactly, yeah, that's a good point.
All right, um, all right, the next item is, um, the, to formally eliminate the farm animal access, excise tax as submitted by the, uh, Board of Assessors. And, uh, Mike Ma- okay, hold on, and, um, Mike Mauder is here and Mike, uh, I do have a couple of questions, so if you don't mind, just come up to me. Uh, but, George, do you have a question first?
Well, it's probably the same as you, it's, how much money are we talking about? And, uh, how many farm animals do we have in town?
The excise is by return, so they have to report them, and so I don't have a number for you, Tommy, but it's, it's like a couple of dollars per chicken.
Per chicken?
It's, 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 it's a lot, it sounds silly, but it's, it's per animal, it's a low number, I wanna say six dollars or something. It's, it's really a low number and it's per animal and the owners have to, um, send us a return every year that dictates how many of these they have and...
So, when I had six pet chickens, I was expected to pay the fee, is that what you're saying?
I would, if that's a hypothetical question?
Yes.
Okay, 'cause if it were an actual question, we do have the right to go back prior years to collect it, so...
So, puts the answer to the...
He's gonna go capture chickens.
Before they pass.
What you're saying, though, is if I have a couple of pet chickens, I'm obligated to pay, it's like a dog license fee type thing?
It's similar to that, all, but it's, it's, it's actually a tax as opposed to a license.
Okay.
So, you have to, um, report the number of animals you have and then we go by that. And in theory, we, um, also have the ability to, um, to go and check and count.
So, you're checking if you're requesting it is to be done away with, right?
Yeah, it's a local option. Most towns don't do it anymore. It's, it's, it's one of those things that's been in the, yeah, it's been in the books for years. It's not, um...
Who requires a town meeting or a call, correct?
I believe it does and it's, it's not a large source of income, so...
Okay, um, just, um, Mike, the last sentence there, it says, uh, the, uh, the local authority, uh, pursuant to Section twenty-one C may, by two-thirds vote, seek voters' approval to impose the, to, to not impose, pardon me, the, uh, excises established by the section. My question to you, do you know if that is at a town meeting or if it has to be at an election?
Um, I believe it's at a town meeting, so it's, it's, it's basically an item that needs to be voted on, so...
Okay, um, uh, yeah, I don't have a problem voting on that. I'm just wondering what the mechanism is. Does it have to be because it's a time, uh, oh, issue? If it has to be on a, uh, town election, then we're gonna have to do, approve it, uh, post haste, right?
I own all the, the restrictions on that, but we're gonna have to look into that.
Yeah, um...
Can we put it on a special meeting that we'll be having for the Lakeville thing?
Well, that's, that's, see if it's a town meeting. If it's a town meeting, we could put it on, uh, you know, this, uh, Lake District. Could you just have maybe Mike check with, um, oh, uh, Jackie if she knows, um, what it is?
Yeah, we can find out.
Yeah, um, so that's my, um, Mark, did you have a question?
I think if this is gonna go to a town meeting, that that's, it's somewhat of a subsidy to farmers. Um, so, I mean, when I could go house to house, somebody who has two chickens or three or four goats, but there are some larger scale farms in town which have a significant quantity of heads of livestock. These farms are already receiving subsidies through, uh, sixty-one, sixty-one or sixty-one A through the assessors' office on the land. They're taking a benefit, um, so we'll be further subsidizing their operations, which is something that I think townspeople should vote on. And I think we're, we're...
Yeah, um, yes, it, actually, it's a stipulation. The law has to be approved by the, uh, by the voters. Um, so, with, uh, that in mind...
But it, isn't it up to us to even put it in front of the voters?
Well, right, if we, if we vote by a two-thirds majority, uh, we can remove, uh, the, well, we would approve the removal, removal of the tax. Um, and, um, then it's up to the voters. Just so everyone's, uh, aware, from the letter that, uh, old Mike McHugh sent to us, uh, it's saying that it hasn't been assessed since nineteen eighty-three. So, um, that, I don't know if that answers your question at all, but, 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 uh, the, the problem, the problem is...
We have to waive the fees for dog, for pet licenses for dogs. Obviously, still require ready shots, but not, not charge the fees for all of the residents to benefit from that. By the way, I don't have any skin in that game. I don't have any tax.
Okay, all right, so it would be town meeting.
Okay.
All right, it would be in a, uh, David brought out, um, okay.
I could just, ju- just to address that, this, this is a tax, the assessors don't have any jurisdiction over fees or licenses or anything. That's a separate issue as far as this is concerned, so...
Okay, David pointed out, uh, or interpreted, uh, for me a little bit. It would be a town meeting. So, I guess my question is, do we want to vote to, as a board, to, uh, put before the town meeting to decide whether or not they want to, uh...
I'd like to get more information to see if this is even worth doing. And, and we're not taxing anything since nineteen eighty-three.
Right, so what we would be doing, uh, George, is we would be remove, we would be taking an exception to this law. In other words, we would be empowering the Board of Assessors not to, uh, raise the tax.
No, I understand that, but to Mark's point, uh, are there commercial farmers here that should rightly be taxed? And if they are, why aren't they? And according to this letter we have since nineteen eighty-three, uh, I'd just like to know a little more about that.
So, is the, um, Animal Control Officer, um, updated on her bond book? And is that some of the stuff that would be included in there? I'm asking David or Charlie?
I honestly don't know.
I, I believe the bond book, uh, is more a, uh, report on the conditions and a, than the number.
But that would give us an indication of how many barns that there are in town.
Right, um, yes, to, to the last of my knowledge, she was, she was, um, up to date and to be perfectly honest, I don't know how many, um, bond inspections she's done.
So, that would give us an indication of how many barns that we can go from there.
Yeah, I mean, somebody has to do some research on this to see what this is really worth or not worth.
Okay.
So, put this on hold.
The mic, uh, all right, that, you're on hold. Um, yes, um, while you're here, um, so you don't have to endure anymore if you don't, my, uh, me so much...
The wash part, by the way, is facing the wrong way, that's it.
It's all that, right?
It's new, it's new, uh, please, why don't we jump to nineteen, uh...
Okay, um, I'll actually just turn it over to, to Michael, um. The assessors have had a meeting. They reached out to myself and David. They have an idea of, um, how they would like to see the Board of Assessors Department run, um, and I'll just, you can explain that, Mike, to the board.
Yeah, we get, we've had, um, an ass- uh, an assistant all these years and we need to replace that person. What we're looking to do is, um, put in a full-time director of assessing, um, eliminate the part-time clerk and make the part-time an assistant assessor. Having a director of assessing gives us, um, a more experienced person and gives us somebody who has the ability to work, uh, in more detail than an assistant does, so working directly on negotiating, um, TIFs and pilots, um, working on renegotiating our valuation vendors so that we can take on more responsibility, um, doing certain field work. Um, at this point, we don't have anybody to go out and count the cows and the chickens, so, you know, if that's something that you wanna do, we need to have somebody to be able to go out and do that. Having the assistant assessor rather than a clerk, um, the state, uh, the DOR requires that if, um, an employee is doing any, any work that affects values or ma- or has any decision-making process, that that person has to be certified and a clerk is not a certified person to be able to do that. So, um, changing it to an assistant, a part-time assistant assessor would give us the ability to have that person certified to take on more responsibility and get more of these things done, so that's what I...
Question for me, currently, uh, on property tax, personal property tax. How do we assess that? I mean, does somebody go to stop and shop and count the number of computers and desks and chairs, et cetera?
Personal property is done by a, um, a return, very similar to what income taxes. In other words, the taxpayer sends us a return and lists what equipment they have, what years they purchased it, what price they paid. Um, we then take the depreciation on that and assess the value at that point. Ideally, we should be going out to, um, verify that information.
Is that ever audited?
That's something that, personal property is, is one of the most difficult taxes to track because there's no, um, well, for instance, with real estate, we know where it is. It doesn't move. With vehicles, the registry tells us, um, the, the information and so they're more easily tracked. With personal property, there's no way to know where it is or who has it. So, the ideal is that we get a company, send us their return and give us their list of property and then we send somebody out to go and verify it.
That's my question.
At this point, we don't have the personnel that'd be able to do it.
So, we're not doing it?
Correct.
Okay, that was really the question, yeah.
Um, Mike, just as a note, um, so you're aware, and, and if you promote your, your, uh, senior clerk to assistant, um, assessor, he's not gonna start at step one because he will be, will be being paid less than his max out on senior clerk. So, you're gonna have to bring him to, uh, a step that gives him a pay raise, okay, just so you're aware.
Yeah, this, this...
Okay, ju- just as you're budgeting, I, I, I saw that and I, so, um, so, okay.
I just wanna follow up, um, you also, in our meeting, you also said there would be some cost savings because, um, the two companies that we use right now to go out, we wouldn't have to do that, so we could see some cost savings in that as well.
We could. Actually, one, one item, um, there are other inspections that we can't do now because of personnel and we can't get them contracted, so those inspections we could do. There are others that, um, we're in the process now of reworking our contracts, so if we know that we have somebody coming on, then we could eliminate some of those things that haven't done in-house. Um, and that's another reason why to switch the clerk to an assistant assessor because if the, if the director's out doing those things, then the assistant can actually, um, make decisions and get things done as opposed to waiting till somebody comes back to do it. So, it's, it's part of that process as well.
Right, um, I don't know actually if we need or can, but, uh, I have no issue with this, uh, going forward.
I, I just, um, I had a sticker shock. So, I mean, I would wanna make sure that that is a correct amount and I would like to see from other towns, um, what, what that is.
Yeah, we've, we've done a survey and we can get you some more details.
Yeah, that's perfect.
We're actually, it's, it's tough to get responses to those, but we're still working on it, but, um, basically, you know, most positions, and I think we talked about this, most positions in any, any town, any, any business, that somebody's been in long-term, um, to replace them from, with somebody new is, is generally, yeah, it's a big difference.
The same amount, right.
Right, it's a big difference.
Yeah, if you could forward that to me, that would be great.
Sure.
Okay.
Um, and one thing sort of related, um, we could use somebody part-time now. We're, we're really shorthanded because we don't have a full-time person at all, so I don't, I know there was a floater in town hall, but I don't think you have anybody now, so, I don't know if that's something you're considering, but we're, especially at this time of year, we get a lot of people coming in with, um, abatements and just information and so forth and unfortunately, the office is closed at, you know, a lot of times, so, any, any hope we could get...
We can look over, we can look over his hours and go from there, see.
He's gotta be kind and maxing out, but, yeah.
Well, the person we have, I think, is maxed out, and I, I'm thinking more in terms of if we can get some, uh, other help.
Yeah.
All right, do I have a motion to approve this?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Uh, back to, uh, the agenda and item number twelve, uh, would be the approval of the IRS mileage rates for twenty twenty, uh, which on the sheet, uh, presented here from the IRS itself, it's fifty-seven, uh, point five cents for business, um, seven, uh, cents for medical moving and, uh, fourteen for, uh, charitable organizations.
Second.
Motion made and, uh, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Uh, item number fourteen is, um, a removal of, from, uh, sixty-one A, um, Section fourteen, uh, property at zero Marie's Way, which is basically the corner of Marie's Way and, um, Chase Road. Um, the map pa- uh, mapping lot is, uh, two-two-eight, uh, for the map and lot, uh, eight point zero-two, uh, of the assessors' map. Uh, this is land that is, um, presently involved with, um, solar array and I, I, I think the letter's a little, um, off. It, I think it's on, we're actually gonna only, uh, be involved with, uh, parcels of land, um, which are four point three-one-three acres and... And point uh four-seven-zero acres, I believe the rest of the land was previously. Um taken out of sixty-one A. So the bottom line is uh if we uh, the question is, do we wanna uh take it out and waive our rights? Or do we want to uh try to purchase it and the purchase price, I think, was eight hundred and eighty thousand sixty dollars and eighty cents? So I don't know.
Where exactly is this?
Uh it's at the corner of Marie's Way and Chase Road, um. Down uh to the east of uh Chase Cemetery on Chase Road. There's already a solar array there, uh this, I believe, actually is only a couple of little acreage plots. That are near the first solar array.
So it's so it's not the twenty-eight-nine?
I don't think it really, I mean. I mean, it's, he's he's asked us to do the whole thing, uh but I think that uh he's a little mistaken. In that the biggest part of the uh acreage there has already uh been removed.
By by saying that he paid the rollback tax.
Right, yeah.
He's implying that that's already out and they.
Let's make a motion that we put this aside till we find out exactly what's going on.
I believe we only have thirty days to act on it, so we wouldn't, we'd have to schedule another.
What's going on, George, is we uh we can either uh waive our right. Or we can go into negotiations to buy the land, which is uh. Oh was fair marketed at uh eight hundred and eighty thousand uh sixty dollars and eighty cents.
Well, I I don't think, I can't vote on that till I see the land, see and see if there's any use for the town for it.
It's in a private development, correct?
Right, well, it well.
It's inside the dev- so you know where um. That house sits on the corner, uh if you're going down Chase Road, there's a big house on the corner, it's in it's in that development.
Okay, I think I know which one you're talking about.
Yeah, it's in there, but uh it is, this letter is very confusing because it talks about. Um a total of twenty-eight-nine-seventy-six acres and then it talks about twenty-five-point-two-eight-six and then it goes into. The twenty-eight-point-nine-seven-six again, so is it the difference between the twenty-eight-point-nine-seven-six and the twenty-five-point-two-eight-six?
Um yes, um I believe.
Is there a solar farm on there now?
There is, and this is, so. Like I said, he's confused, I think he's confused a little bit, the the whole acreage. Uh that the solar farm is on is twenty-nine acres. Um twenty-five of it is already actively in a a solar um farm. In which they had paid the uh the rollback taxes uh previous, and at that time, by the law. We, before they paid the rollback taxes, we would have had first refusal on the land, so. I'm going to assert that because they paid the rollback taxes on twenty-five plus acres. That we already um have had our say on that acreage. And the only thing that we really have the say in is the two um parcels that are in the next paragraph there. Which are the four-point-three-one-three acres and the point-four-seven-zero acres. So what had, I believe, happened is they end up with. Uh a few acres that were basically boxed out, they can't use. And that they had uh apparently sold or want to sell to uh the people who have. Established the solar array on the property already.
I'm totally confused now, but it says twenty-five acres to be sold is already a solar farm.
Right.
Right.
What they're selling is twenty-five acres, a twenty-five acre solar farm. The solar panels are on this farm then?
Yeah, so it says um the twenty-five-point-two-eight-six acres to be sold has already been converted to a solar farm. And a rollback tax was paid to the town of Freetown.
Right.
So they wanna add another four-point-three-one-three acres to that twenty-five-point-two-eight-six and that's where you're gonna come up with the.
I actually have the full purchase and sales agreement here, which I didn't send to the board. Um the the total thing that they're, I think you're exactly right, they, the twenty-five-point-two-eight-six was previously approved. They wanna add four-point-three-one-three acres and they're selling a grand total of twenty-eight-point-nine-seven-six acres. That's what that eight hundred thousand.
And that includes the solar panels?
That I don't know, or if it's just the land.
I believe it's just the land.
Yeah, I think it's just the land.
Uh because it it states here, has already been converted to a solar farm.
Right.
To me, that wouldn't.
Yeah, it it doesn't state in this that um seem one way or the other.
Well, I've got a paragraph here. Part of this land, twenty-five-point-two-eight-six acres. To be sold has already been converted to a solar farm and a rollback taxes was paid.
The purchase and sales agreement just says the seller holds fee simple title to a certain parcel of land consisting of approximately twenty-eight-point-nine-seven-six acres.
What he would have done is he would have taken the twenty-five-point-two-eight-six out of sixty-one A. Now he's rolling in the four-point-three-one-three and the point-four-seven.
Wants to take out the four-point-three out of the sixty-one A.
Right.
And then and then he's gonna sell the whole thing off to to another company for eight hundred and eight thousand dollars. Which I would suspect would include the solar panels because that that would be the value, it's not the value's not in the land. Well, it couldn't be in twenty-eight acres, but yeah.
I I think it might actually just be the, I think it's just the land.
But the the bottom line is, is that we, the bottom line is, is does the board want to exercise its right? To purchase the the four-point-three-one-three acres or it doesn't?
I mean, the it doesn't really have a value to us because we can't do anything over there, it's it's zoned.
Right, it's, it would be.
A a conservation purpose or it's next to conservation land that we already own or was in a location that we could.
Right.
Use it for municipal building or some other use that would be uh, you know. Uh associated with the operation of the town, the board would, or you wanted to maintain it as open space. You know, I I've been in other towns where we had, for example, a hundred acre lot in Oxbridge. The town, you know, there were four hundred condominiums gonna go there, uh the town said, no, we'll buy the land and and preserve it as a hundred acres of open space. So it's it's really up to the board, four-point-some-odd acres is not a lot of land, I guess that's.
Right, two houses.
Yeah. I'll make a motion to um uh waive our option to purchase the twenty-eight-point-nine-seven-six acres.
Second.
Uh motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, next item is um basically an update or um on the town administrator's uh. Performance review, um we had decided that uh we would have it by the sixteenth. Um I don't think you had a chance to do it, George, and.
No. I'd like to make a motion to uh postpone this.
Okay, um would it be um. And I, I'm gonna give you an idea of, can we uh set up a date for a uh a meeting just to go over that? Would that be something that the two of you might be uh. Inclined to approve?
Yeah, I've already met with David, so um.
And Callie has already met with me, so. So what are you trying to do there?
Well, why?
You just have to finish your part of it, you know, and I know you got a lot on your plate right now.
And then we could have a separate meeting, um.
I I really don't wanna get into detail here, but. I don't really want to do it, okay? Uh there's a lot of issues that I have with this. And uh it's my understanding that we're doing this to uh basically discuss contractual agreement.
Yes.
And uh I think my suggestion would be that we'd meet. Uh an executive session to discuss the uh contract.
Okay, so what you're suggesting is that we um move on to a to potential contract negotiations?
Yes.
Do you wanna make a motion?
That was my motion.
Okay, um all right, I'll I'll go along, I don't know what you want.
I'll second that, I just, uh we. We, so George doesn't wanna do it, but are we, like, we still have ours on the table, so we wanna do it that.
Right, well, um.
I mean, I've already met with them.
Yeah, I.
We've already done it, so.
I I throw out the suggestion that we uh have a s- uh a special meeting to uh. Discuss that and then from there we could, you know, go on, so instead it's. I'd like to see a date where we go and we say, okay, we're gonna sit down, uh the, that's gonna be the only topic in the meeting. And uh we go from there.
Yeah, I I I don't wanna get into detail about everything, I feel. You know, I I feel like I've said, I we've had a meeting and we did it, so I I know what you're saying, um so.
Do we wanna then then have a meeting and go into an executive session to uh?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, fine, all right, uh then just, anyone have a date um? That they, with my.
Are you, are you uh still going away for February and then I'll be here?
Because, right, well, I'm thinking, I wanna, I would think we could possibly do that, but. And then next week or so?
Nope. The week after.
Let me just see what, I'm just gonna try to get back to, what I have for a calendar maybe? You can all, um so you're saying uh the week of the twentieth?
Yes.
I'm I'm gone from the eighteenth to the twenty-fifth, so.
Well, for our discussion, I mean, if you're not there, I think that's okay.
Yeah, it's it's a contract, so we would set parameters, so, yeah. So do you wanna meet on the twenty-second?
Okay, I'm open on the twenty-second, I don't have a problem with that.
It's a Wednesday, are you good on a Wednesday?
Uh I don't know. January twenty-second, yeah, that's good, what time?
Doesn't matter, you two are retired, so.
Time is not an issue with me, yeah, time during the day at least, uh do.
Three-thirty?
Okay, um uh, yeah.
At town hall?
Sure.
Okay.
And this will be executive session?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, um the next would be um approval of me. December tenth and December ninth, uh pardon me, December tenth and December sixteenth, um minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion made and seconded to approve the uh minutes for December tenth and uh sixteenth, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh next I'll turn it over to the uh town administrator for his report.
Okay, um I have one issue that has uh come up relative to the Old Colony uh school. Uh we had gotten our first assessment in for January first. And uh the assessment was a hundred thirty-four thousand three hundred sixty-five dollars. Higher than we had budgeted for and it goes back to the question that we discussed back in April of uh. Two thousand nineteen regarding um the number of sped uh kids that are attending the school. And the assessment is the assessment based on those students that are attending. It and it basically comes back to uh several, and I think this is gonna have to be an agenda item thing. But I just wanted to give you the heads up that this is in process, that uh we don't have a signed agreement with them. With this issue has been percolating, actually have a letter going back to March of two thousand sixteen. Uh where they said they were gonna do it and they didn't do it, and seventeen, they said they were gonna do it and they didn't do it, eighteen, nineteen. So it's been an ongoing issue, this year, when we got the bill, we actually did get the assessment for the additional money. So there is gonna potentially be a shortfall there, but there's a number of questions that surround uh the issue. One is that in the two thousand sixteen letter, uh there's a specific reference that there's no signed agreement between the town and Freetown and Old Colony. So I guess one question would be the legal question as to whether or not uh they have the authority to. Um assess us the additional fee, which is, you know, uh uh I don't. It it in whether that provision applies to us where we're not in an agreement with the school. Um and if it 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 does say specifically that there is a requirement that we pay that. There's been a specific reference to a template, which goes back once again to two thousand sixteen. Um saying that they're gonna do it as a percentage of this and a percentage of that. We've never seen the template, so we don't know how those nineteen students were determined to be sped students. So there has to be a clarification of how they define the sped uh sped student. How they allocate the assessment for those sped students, is it a a certain percentage of operational costs assigned to certain teachers? That handle that, is it uh is sped defined uh via an exam or an I E P or whatever mechanism? We need to define what that is, and finally, if if all of these things turn out to be true and that we are indeed. Um going to owe uh the district a hundred thirty-four thousand three hundred sixty-five dollars. Uh how we're gonna fund it and uh that could be done through the special town meeting coming in February. I'm not sure, so sure we're actually gonna have time to answer all those questions between now and then. A second option would be to look at the outstanding balances as we close in at the end of the year. To see if we can make internal transfers to make up some of that money and then use uh. Uh a reserve fund transfer to 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 complete the transaction. A a third option would be uh in uh at the June town meeting, the special town meeting that usually precedes. Uh the annual town meeting and is generally for situations like this, to ask for the money at that point. Um there's a whole bunch of issues surrounding this, I think that we really need to to uh, you know, draw a line in the sand and determine if this is. Really something that we should be paying and not paying and and uh define legally what our obligations are. So I just wanted to give you the heads up, so it's no surprise to anybody that uh this is the situation we're in and that we're gonna need to address it. Any questions or thoughts?
I mean, we've talked about this.
Right, we put it off, uh we we did, we put it off. Um so do you want, do we wanna uh empower David to talk? Uh get some answers to our questions or do we wanna put this on for another night to? To talk uh in more in depth because um.
I'm gonna get the answers to the questions regardless, like, you know.
I I I think I corresponded with you about it, so you have some of mine, yeah.
Right, um well.
So, yeah, let, we can, we, I mean.
Might be helpful to talk to the superintendent, you know, at the regional school. Also, and to other consultants that know about sped and can help us determine, you know, how that they're. Number one, how they're determining the kids are sped qualified and number two, how they're determining what the assessment actually is and what. Uh factors go into assessing that amount of money per student.
I don't know, you know, I'm ask, I have spoken. I've spoken to my wife, who is uh thirty-five years experience as a speech and language pathologist uh. In the the school departments and uh she well aware of terminology and she has said that she'd be willing. She has said that she'd be willing to go with David um to ask questions or to ask follow up questions. And to analyze what the information that uh they are given, so I, she's willing to do that. I don't know if uh, you know, it's it's having a special, it has somebody who's in the field. Uh, with David if you want to do that.
I wouldn't touch that with a ten foot pool, so you guys can make that determination.
Well, the, well, well, I I don't think it's fair, I mean, I'm asking an opinion, okay? I'm asking. All right, well, who who would go with David to have any uh knowledge? Who would we uh send with David to have any knowledge of, you know, what the person who's at Old Colony? Okay, hold, if he just is saying is true or not?
They're not gonna give you our student's name and say this is a student.
No, 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 Lisa, all I'm saying is, is if they say, all right, um. You know, here's a percentage of a guidance counselor, well, what is that guidance counselor doing? Uh, with each one of these students that we uh alleged to have uh in special education? Um, you know, what what are they doing with this person? Uh, one of the things is that the number, the number uh of students that they're saying, we have ninety students there. They're saying that the number is between seventeen and nineteen, so that's twenty percent. Uh, that is a high number for such a uh a school or. My opinion, uh and so it would be to uh have someone there, she's willing to do it. You know, but I I I I don't wanna say, I I don't wanna say, hey, you know, to my wife, go with him. I I want to have uh, you know, that when she sits down there, she's has some uh backing of the board. That is in fact what you wanna do, so I I get, I threw, I throw that out, uh, but I I don't think we're gonna get. Um, you know, a lot of information if we don't have someone who can, you know. Have some knowledge of what regulations are and what the activity actually is.
Is there agreement in terms of we should be investigating what, you know, what? How they define it, how they define the fee? Is there uh understanding there among the board members that this is something we should be doing?
Yeah, we haven't paid this separate fee.
That they've been, oh, we knew about it, but we we didn't have a charge.
No, they've never, they've never sent us a bill, they have never, we always go by the October enrollment for the next year and that's how we do. Um, that's how we're assessed, but we've never been an assessed a special education bill on top of it.
They they actually, there is a letter from two thousand sixteen saying they were gonna do it and I don't know why at that point they didn't do it.
Right.
So.
Because all of a sudden, uh he found a loophole.
They're they're calling it a loophole, yes.
Exactly what's going on and I I think that I, for you, I would touch base with our superintendent because he also feels the same way.
Yeah.
And um, um, the special ed director from there because, I mean, at least it's in-house and it's taking a.
Okay, so my question is, ha- have, maybe this is cryptic, uh, but have you spoken to uh people about this issue? In the school department?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, because that information hasn't been conveyed.
Oh, wait, a long time ago.
All right, so.
When we first started to discuss this.
Back in April, cause I went back to my emails just to see when we were we were talking about this last.
So, um, and there, do you have any, do they have any read on this? Okay.
All right, well, why don't, I I I, do we wanna, it's not really an agenda, I I was just giving the heads up. It would it be worth putting it on as an agenda item?
Yeah, um, I I wanna get to the bottom, I mean, if if we owe, if we owe them the money, we owe them the money.
I agree with that.
Statutorily, if we don't, and.
We just wanna make sure that the assessment is fair and based upon, predicated upon established principles. That determine what the assessment should be.
That.
And where's the template?
Yeah, and what what is the template?
What is?
All right, um, so I guess Tim will put that on for. Future, uh, yeah, okay.
We don't, we actually did make the first payment for the full amount with the understanding that if um it was determined that. There was gonna be a change in it for some reason, or it wasn't something that could be done legally. Then we would just reduce the second payment, which is due in June by the additional amount that we 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 basically overpaid.
So, uh, so it's not a separate bill, it was a one?
No, it was included in the assessment, the total was one point seven.
So what does this new letter say?
There's no new letter, it's a sixteen, two thousand sixteen letter.
Just, we can put it on the agenda.
Okay, um, anything else, David?
Oh, all right, um, I get a letter from the governor. Uh, that the F Y twenty twenty chapter ninety money was increased by forty thousand three hundred thirty five dollars as part of the. Supplemental aid budget, uh, so the net amount is four hundred forty three thousand six hundred eighty eight dollars. So that's good news, uh, I also got a letter from Senator Roderick's uh that the funding for. Uh, there was, there was a line item put in the supplemental budget for the constant aging uh in the amount of twenty five thousand dollars. Uh, for energy efficiency in uh handicapped accessibility, uh, that was approved also. So they're gonna get an additional twenty five thousand dollars, it's gonna be uh put through all the services, uh, the state agency. And finally, I got a email today from uh Ashley Lopes uh from the school business manager. Uh, a- asking uh or inviting, I should say, uh, the board of selectmen to a regional budget hearing. They're gonna be having on January sixteenth, twenty twenty at six thirty uh P M at the regional school. They're just gonna do a budget overview, so that's all I have.
Please station update?
We just met, um, but uh the roof um will be um finished by next week. More than likely, it's been good weather, so we're ninety five percent of the way done with the roof. Windows will also start to go in, um, the winter conditions are here, so you really don't know what's gonna happen, but right now we're still on schedule for June. Um, like I emphasized the good weather lately, um, and uh there's a new, um, well, he's not new, he's been around for a while. Um, our project manager that's on site, he's um built a good, great team with the subs, um, so everything's going accordingly. Um, Eversource is gonna be installing the utility pole next week and the cul- they're finishing up the culvert.
All right, um. Item eighteen, um, I will not be uh. In state uh in February, um, we hope to be able to set up um remotely. Um, I cannot be the chair, so I don't know if you want to discuss this further tonight or. If you wanna wait and when George can come back.
Yeah, we'll wait for George.
Okay, all right, and then so I'll just um turn it over to you for twenty.
So I have a letter here from. Um, Charles Maycomer, um, it's come to my attention that Teddy Walsh has expressed a desire. To continue working part time beyond his current termination of January fifteenth, twenty twenty. He's submitting this letter to inform us that he has no objections to this and would welcome him to stay as a part time employee. Um, as long as he's willing and able, and then he talked about historically, um, on the roster, part time often. Retired people came back such as Bud Clock, Ray Chase and Wes Winslow. Um, and anyway, he understands at the at rest with the uh personnel board.
Okay, I'd make a motion that uh we allow for the continuing uh appoint uh. Employment of uh Mister Walsh, um, at least through uh June thirtieth.
So, I I I'd like George to be here because there was some discussion on um having Teddy work at the transfer station at one point. So.
Uh, but given his uh disability, I would reject that. Because especially him being there alone, uh, there would be a problem.
Yeah, I wouldn't want him there alone, but, so can we put this on for the next agenda, please? He can work until until we make a determination.
Probably, well, his 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 expire is June, January fifteenth, so do you wanna extend it?
Yes, so at least another two weeks.
Okay, so I, you should probably vote on that.
Yeah.
All right, go ahead.
Oh, yeah, I'll make a motion that we, how about we make a motion to uh continue.
January thirty?
January thirtieth.
Okay, fine, all right, um, I have a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The last item would be in the executive session, um, under Mass General Law, chapter thirty. Uh, A section twenty one, uh, paragraph A, sub paragraph three. To discuss strategy with respect to litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect. On the litigating position of the public body and the chair so desires, Jeremy Bernado versus County Freetown Highway. Uh, Highway Department and others, uh, the board, pardon me, the chair does uh or. Declare that it's a uh would be the detriment of uh opposition. Accept the motion to go into executive session.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, uh, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Ms. Pacheco?
Yes.
Uh, Mister Sullivan, yes, and we will not uh come back into open session.